Find everybody. Call me in order. We do have a quorum to take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes. The chairman, I'd like to add some amend the agenda.
Okay.
And add a discussion on data processing budget department fifty two.
Okay. We'll amend the agenda and we'll have that for discussion. After.
Probably after fifteen.
Yeah, after fifteen, please, or next level discussion. All right, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So.
Right, so is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, I?
I'm in.
Opposed? Right, motion carries. Yeah, and presidential manager from BG Clark. Good morning.
Reporting in progress.
Go ahead.
Good morning, well, thanks for having us here today this morning. My name is John Gold and we're BG Clark Residential Facility. Service group. Ninety three. And so here today. Talk about you know the new legislation now where. But it was under department correction. Prior to that, we were. Or become board of supervisors oversaw our department. All the governing part of our department. And now the board, the legislature became advisor. So we're here just to see if there's any interest in me, any of. Want to be being on the advisory board? I don't know who was on the, what we were on, who I recommend. Okay, so if there's an interest in being on the advisory board. Agent Lee. Be. Get input of you guys in terms of what we're doing. For me, or what's. Serving for account. And this is.
I'm Jane Nelson, so I'm one of the primary officers of. County, so I've been here. Hush, about seven years probably. So I've been covering Worth County for about seven years. Um, I've been with the department corrections for nine years, but I worked through pretty rich for thirteen years prior to that as a counselor, so.
Yeah, how many, how many clients do you have?
Um, I, I probably have about thirty, thirty clients within Worth County. I also cover Winnebago and a little bit of the Fariberto. Um, yeah, I, I kind of meet with people between here and Mason City, obviously from other manly people, it's easier for them to get to Mason City, so. I've also occasionally met at the city hall in Manly as well, so.
Yeah, we appreciate you, you know, I was, I used to cover Worth County back in the day. We're still in the same office there because I used to make clients out, so we really appreciate the space that, that we get here. Of course, space here to be providing. Always very, it's really good space, I'll talk with Jane about that in terms of. Right there next to Sheriff, so it's good for us in terms of just our security and our safety. So we really appreciate the space that we have for all other locations. Um, so, and we just have a little presentation here just to let you know who we are, so we're community based corrections. And we are serving at the second judicial district here, serves twenty two counties. You know, the Mason City office served nine county. That's. Ten counties now, so, and it kind of, we work with people on probation, parole, work release status. Uh, and so, and our, our goal is really to, to help individuals, you know, make better decisions. Get reacquainted into the communities, find jobs, become really contributing members of the community. And also to identify things that led to their criminal behavior. Being able to sort of plug them into the right resources. Help them up. Make changes to. Fix those problems, let them down this road, so.
Well, where to go now?
Sure, it's fine, so there's a second judicial district and you see Iowa has eight judicial districts. That we have in the state of Iowa, we're the second, we're, we're very rural, we're, we're a very rural area. I will cover the center of, of the state there and we have, basically we have four main hub offices. Mason City, Articletown, Fort Dodge and Ames, those are kind of our main offices. And in those offices, we have four probation parole units. Uh, field supervision units, and then we also have three residential corrections. We have one in Fort Dodge, one in Mason City, but never one in the Articletown. We used to have one in Ames back in the day, but we lost a federal contract back in two thousand eight, they're right around the time period. Uh, they decided to close in one of the deeps of office. And so if you look at how many people do we serve, you know, the eight community, the eight judicial. Community based corrections serves about twenty nine thousand people in the state of Iowa. And then. Nine prisons have eighty five hundred people. And in the community residential facilities throughout the state that there are twenty. Uh, we serve eleven eight, eleven eighty five. If you look at the cost, the daily cost of incarceration is a hundred and seven dollars per person. Where the daily cost to be on probation parole is seven dollars, so having people in the community on probation and parole. It's much more cost effective, now we understand some people are going to end up in prisons. Probably. Earn their way there, but, but we know that having people on probation parole in the community. Uh, is much more cost effective, and not only that, but they pay taxes, you know, we have people, you know, one of the requirements information that you work in the community. And if they're working in the community, they're paying taxes and they're also purchasing. So, so what do we do, so we have, we have people on pretrial supervision. Uh, in our, in our department, people on pretrial are people who have not yet been convicted of a crime. They've gone to court and the judge may release them on pretrial supervision rather than. But we have people on pretrial supervision. As well, we also write pre-sentence investigation reports, so individuals that are convicted of a felony charge, judge generally ordered. Pre-sentence report be completed and scheduled sentencing at a later time, our department writes those reports for the judge for the sentence. Pre-sentence report is basically sort of a historical report of this individual. It also has recommendation for sentencing as well, it's kind of a sentencing tool, sentencing will guide to the judge. And then if the judge suspends a sentence, uh, you can put them on probation supervision, so. On probation. And then, uh, they can also put them in a residential, it's like the facility that I run in Mason City. We have individuals there that are there as probation, maybe they're not quite, they're not ready to send to prison. They really don't want to give them just straight probation to the community, maybe they have some more intensive needs and intensive things that need to be addressed, so they'll put them in the residential. And we have people on parole, people who've been to prison and parole releases back for supervision. So as a probation parole officer, you got to kind of know all the facets. Be different types of services.
Any questions about Neil?
I've never been on that list.
So I kind of explained, I guess, about that there, uh, got ahead of myself there. I've talked about the goals, assessing needs, providing treatment, making sure they're paying victim restitution fines, you know, people who, uh. You know, over victim restitution money, we want to make sure that's being paid. Maintaining employment. Pretty far.
But the only exception being is like if they're on disability, we can't force them to work, but we try. Try and create some type of structure within their day. So I mean, that's, those are probably the most challenging because we can't force them to work and otherwise live. And lose their disability, but we try and get them involved with like folk rehab where they have Iowa workforce, they do like. Um, a combination where they can work so many hours as long as they go toward the specific goal. If they're on disability, that won't hurt their disability, so if it's like saving up for a car or their basic needs, like they have to set specific goals. And it's called ticket to work program. So we work with them a lot, I'm trying to get people engaged with that if they're on probation and on disability, so that at least they have.
So these are the, so what are these that we have in our district here, three facilities, we have over a hundred and eighty one other facilities. Uh, the BG Clark Center right now, I have about, I'm running close to sixty clients in the BG Clark Center. And if you drive by that building, you may think, boy, how did they put six people? It's pretty tight, you know, government in the facility, we kind of have a split level in the back, we have twenty, twenty rooms in there. And it is our, it's the only coed facility in the district, so we have sixteen women in that facility as well. So, uh, and then Fort Dodge is a little larger, sixty six, and then Mark the town is about the same size, Mason City in terms of. So recently we're seeing a real point from the prisons in terms of getting people out of prisons, twenty percent over capacity. So they're putting pressure on the residential facilities to start taking more, more. So, uh, and when they're in the facility, they pay rent in the facility as well, they owe a hundred, they owe twenty bucks a day for rent. Hundred and forty bucks a week, they're paying rent, they work. They turn their checks in, we budget their checks through the budgeting system. Pay their rent, pay fine, restitution, the bad law, that. We also are required in the safe money and to save the pound, so they can get out. Is to get out in apartment, it costs them, you know, between a thousand and fifty, a hundred bucks, so we want them to save money, so they are ready to transition.
And they do have food there as part of their rent.
Yep, so, yep, good point, yep, we offer food service, we offer free meals a day there, we have a. Facility, so, uh, so they get meals there and provide their meals, all three facilities. And really a hundred and forty bucks a week for a room. Or in food, so that's really good advice, you know.
They wouldn't think so.
Yeah, they may not. But they, well, they're there, they, you know, they got to get work, they go to treatment. So you want to advance through that, the goals, get them back in the community, and many times I've seen people get out of their. I have a facility, we have a seven thousand dollars in savings account, have an apartment, you have a job. And I think the key question is, can they keep that together when they get out, you know? That's what we hope for. It's always worked out that way. And set them up pretty good in terms of the transition. This is kind of an age range, you know, people on supervision. Uh, you know, most of our clients are between thirty one and fifty one, this age, uh, over fifty one. Fourteen percent, so as you get older, come less involved in the whole justice. Raised down by a race and mostly probably Asian. Uh, gender mostly male, you know, I guess we're only have sixty.
Oh, sure. So, right, dissidents, just basically, we want to identify the risk, we have a lot of different. Tools that we use to identify kind of the risk and look at. Like they're aging out, like what you had mentioned, is, you know, we know that as we get older, most people mature and, and kind of. Get sick of kind of playing those games and, and so we look at kind of lots of factors as a part of that. And so they look, they use a lot of research evidence-based practices to support that over the many, many year. Um, and, and what we know is that it's, you know, the younger they are, the more impulsive they are, so oftentimes that creates. Kind of a higher level of needs. Um, and so we have to create a lot more structure usually for younger, and so I mentioned like under thirty. You know, oftentimes they need a lot more structure, that's oftentimes probably why BG has a lot of. Kind of that age range, because they need that structure. Um, we look at, yeah, like all those, the assessment, assessment of their prior criminal injuries, their. Uh, prior failures on supervision, um, and violence is the biggest part, and we look at violence or having victims. You know, direct victims and that aspect of things, so. That determines kind of how frequently we meet with people, so we, we have a five level system, so we go from one. One to five, and, um, five is we meet with them at least weekly, and they're usually plugged into some kind of. Groups and treatment and both in our, within our DOC, but also outside, like with very rare and other partners like that. Um, and level one is considered a low risk. And so we have low risk officers that oftentimes carry a higher, a very higher case load, like two hundred and fifty probably. Um, of low risk and they're oftentimes can do pretty well on self-provation, essentially. They do check-ins with us, um, and so. Those, uh, and then we have kind of the variety in between, I'm a PO two, so I kind of. Deal with the general bulk of it, so I have levels two through five, generally we have high-risk officers. Cover level fives, you know, that are very violent offenders, they have a much smaller caseload. I cover about, I have about a hundred people on, um. And whereas like a, a PO three, which is the high caseload, they have about twenty five to thirty five people. They have kind of a higher violence ratings.
So these are just kind of some of the areas that we look at when we do assessments, now obviously your component, we associate with. Or give people on behavioral behavior, probably going to be involved in that as well. Okay, substance abuse, then issue with substance abuse, mental health, though they see that, you know, uh, real prevalent. You know, times it's hard, you know, did the substance abuse create mental health issue, or mental health, did you create the substance abuse issue? So looking at substance abuse and mental health is. Trying to get them stabilized, wait a minute, how was the mean? Mental health, you know, make sure they're managing their mental health, taking their medication, things like that are very important. Uh, wanting to match, Jane talked a lot about this in terms of matching the dosage of treatment and supervision. What's sort of that third level, the higher the risk they are, the more involved with it. Lower risk or less involved. So really trying to use our resources twice. And we want to build strengths, we want to build protective factors in the community.
I always tell some of my, my clients are, you know, they, we don't want you to be on probation forever, you know, we want you to connect in the community and have those community resources and supports. Because that's part of that incentive is feeling belonged in a community. And so that's probably one of the toughest transitions because. They can see us as an advocates at times for them, you know, and support, but then it's helping them. Be done with us and, and feel connected in the community, so, especially in smaller communities. Um, overcoming the stigma that got them to where they're at. That's probably one of the toughest parts is helping them see past that. They're not, you know, that everybody doesn't think they can change, you know, and so. Trying to get them involved in community projects, services, things like that is what I really like, it's, it's sometimes tough in smaller communities and. And I also just tell them, you know, you've got to prove yourself that you've made those changes over time. And regain trust and kind of overcompensate to. The change, you know, to show that you're, you're making those changes, but that's probably one of the most. Successor, successful pieces to it though, is like when you see them connect in the community and be very engaged and. In, in owning their stuff. That's been really rewarding when you see that, you know, too, and I think it creates that environment that from going in the right direction.
So how, well, would that work, no? So we look at some of our successful discharges, you know, seventy seven percent of this career twenty one discharge successfully on probation. So I, I rate it in terms of successful discharges. Uh, revocations, probation revocations, we had a hundred and thirty seven this career twenty one. I think it's really, uh, you know, us, a lot of that work trying to help people make changes, plug them in and treatment. And really look at alternatives to, to sending. You know, kind of a good example is people who are struggling with substance abuse issues, or we may get them into an outpatient treatment program rather than sending. So maybe what example, who thinks about researching? So. Most of the people that, that do get revoked to prison are because of new conviction. Obviously, if we have someone on supervision and they commit a new crime, especially assault related crime, they're most likely going to get revoked and they're probably going to end up. So, uh, so most of the revocations are new commitment, do arrest. Uh, percentage of probation clients did not return to prison. Oh, these, these are actually parole, so, so eighty one percent parole, they did not return back.
Sometimes we can get stuck on like. Because the ones that make the news are the ones that are repeat offenders. And so, you know, we can get stuck on ten percent, tend to use the ninety percent of our rate. So, you know, and so. Whole idea, we can get stuck on repeat offenders that you see, but you don't see the ones. That are being successful because they kind of go on and live life.
And the parole revocation reasons are virtually the same with probation. Mainly a new. What type of services do we offer, we have people on GPS monitoring. I was in the sex offender movement for seventeen years and most of my clients were on GPS. So we hook them up to a GPS unit and monitor their activities, where it tells us where they're at, where they're going, and. We have, we have people on like.
And Scram is a random breathalyzer that we have that we can put them on. And it goes off just kind of randomly.
We have a drug court program in Mason City, we have probation calls where we see the drug court home. Connected with some community members and a judge, we'll be people who are. We have a history of substance abuse, relapses, are in really intensive. I have several clients.
And they have just recently opened up to other counties, as long as they have a primary, a primary sees their border. So like I have a Worth County person who just started drug court, lives in Worth County, but. Um, has a Sarah Wardo charge, so he's involved in the court program, so that's kind of been a little bit different than in.
We also do some treatment groups, so we are, we provide treatment to our clients, it's not just all supervision, monitoring. We have treatment, in fact, the rest of these programs are the largest treatment program, we have the most people involved. A lot of the groups now are done working. You know, ever since COVID came, we had to find a new way to do business, and so we started doing virtual groups and it's going to be a member, so.
A lot of the outcomes were the, well, the, really not seeing any differences other than they're funding. So it hasn't been negative.
Do, a new therapy and other treatment related stuff there, and then on the right side is just some substance abuse. Sex offender assist. Substance abuse assistant. Just terms of. And so they, we kind of talked a little bit about our treatment menu, but it gives you an idea of all the different types of treatment services that we provide. And so we have a lot of, of. Different treatment services for different folks, not everybody's the same, people have different levels of functioning, we have different reasons that brought into our system. So we provide a meaningful treatment for bright people and right.
And oftentimes our clients are maybe involved with one of these, but they also have outside therapy, like for rage. Well, and so, you know, they can be pretty busy with.
We got a reentry program where we do some reentry, especially you have BG Clark running the manager, we use reentry with prisons, we do have meetings with the prison counselors. And client and talk about reentry, what's going to be like when you come back into the community, there's something you've got to watch out for. Services, so. Try to reach in and, and with the prisons, we're doing more and more of that. A lot of area that we probably grow more in, now that we're one, we're one agency now. When this reentry, we have people in prison waiting, because we know most of the people in prison are coming back to our community. You know, I think it's like ninety percent was a slide. Most of them are coming back to our community, so we want them to come back and we want them to be successful. And, and to be a contributing member of that community. So we talked a little bit of prison population, we're over twenty percent over capacity, it's twenty two, but, but we're, prisons are full. And we're looking at, you know, getting people out of work release facilities. Uh, we're generally in the bottom, one third of the nation for incarceration rates. Over forty percent incarcerated have a diagnosis of mental illness, so I think mental illness is really a big thing that we're seeing in the correction system. Uh, ninety percent will be released back in the. Talk about those people in prison, they're coming back to our community. Uh, and we have over two million people incarcerated, that's, so we have a lot of people incarcerated. Uh, but the staff at second district working harder to help clients with changes. Uh, clients who return to prison or a risk result of community, so people who do go to prison generally does something very significant that gets them warrant that. That person, very strong. Prohibition remains our best version program, it's called the factory, there's a very important way to keep people out of prison. So that wraps up the presentation, we have any questions or any comments or any?
What do you guys do for staffing the guys down at BG then? Or you keep staff or do you guys, I mean?
Well, uh, keeping staff is difficult, we, we've had some staff shortages. It's, uh, you know, if you work at BG, it's over twenty four out of seven operations, so you have to have staff that work midnight shifts, work weekend. Sometimes it's difficult to keep each staff, you staff report. Well, we, generally in other, other residential facilities, we're seeing a lot more shortage of staff.
So it's everywhere?
It's everywhere, yeah, really.
Well, in Delane and.
Yeah.
They're really frontline to have those facilities, um.
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a tough job, you're around, you're around these people for an eight hour shift. You know, it's really difficult behaviors that we deal with, we, we've had issues in other facility, people, you know, overdosing, eating dark man, you know. People on substances in our facility, since they, since they think about in the community, always have risk to bring stuff back. You know, so it's something to try to, you know, mind and keep in mind, so.
So what you're looking for from us then is a request for someone to be on your advisory board?
Yeah, so, yeah, see if there's any interest in anybody being on the advisory board, uh, I know our administrative. Just depending on that warrant, we could reach out. If there's.
Amanda sent me an email way before Christmas and asked me if I would consider being on it again for another year, and I said yes.
Oh, great.
And she sent back, all she sent back was a thank you, so I just, I see my name is on the list.
Yeah, I'll say, great, yeah.
I had to use some more formal sheet every year, and we didn't get that this year.
Oh, you didn't?
Oh, yeah. I just got it here.
Yeah, I'm not sure like how often we meet or how it's going to be, how much different than before, I believe, so.
At the last meeting, they were going to meet once a year.
Yeah.
Because we went to an advisory.
Yeah.
Situation. So that's the way I understand it, they're, they're still meeting it once a year right now, but it, it could be more. When we get to that meeting, they might decide to not meet more than once.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I did reply to Amanda's.
Great, great, yeah, I mean, it's a new, I mean, I think we've been. More of a governing. All kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully I can get you covered then, don't we?
Yeah. Yeah.
Fantastic. So yeah, well, Enis is willing to do that, then we'll just keep him right where he was at. Until the next election anyways, right?
Yeah.
Well, and I just, I just want to think, uh, again, just thank you guys for. Share a thing for, you know, providing place for us to be. Come up and meet. And I mean, it's just, it's just so much thanks for those, some of the other places, like the counties that we've been in. You know, sometimes. Libraries and.
Right.
You know, random places, but well. So, you know, it's just, it's. It's just nice to be able to have a safety aspect too. And. I know I've had a few questionable people where I've actually had to record them and. That is nice and where I am too. So it's just been.
Glad we're able to help with that.
Oh, thank you for your.
You bet. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Jeff, you look like you got something on your mind.
You're, you're in email. With the, with the code section on.
Yeah.
EMS. We had a chance to look at it, uh. He didn't send me what the state has sent you. And, and by reading it, I've. Is that in order to create one of these, uh, you need. A petition filed of the landowners making up. More than a certain percentage of the valuation. Um, and that's really the first step to get it started. I don't, I'm not real clear. If you're trying to do a district. In more than one township, or if each township is going to have a district.
Yeah.
And there's, there's limitations to the code as far as. You know, I think you can have a district greater than just a township. But I don't know that you can have multiple townships and I don't know.
Yeah, we'll be, we're going after multiples, but they have to be contiguous. So there's two and a half on the south and, and east, and then there's three and a half on the west side. But, uh, Joe Thompson, he's the one that's been talking with the state a little bit more on that.
And I, I saw you, you, I just. If, if you had it, it, uh. Where let me take a look at it. But I mean, then. The biggest hurdle you're going to have for this is, is getting. Getting the property owners to. To put their name on a petition and.
Yeah, we've been working on that. Everybody's been working on that now. So.
Okay.
It just, the, the question, questioning we're getting now is with the state saying that. We can't have this election. Um, and our, the timing that we're going to do, but in the code, it says we can't. So between chapter forty-nine and chapter thirty-nine, there's so much. Discrepancy and confusion. State says we got to follow thirty-nine, but code says we got to follow forty-nine. Um, so they're telling us we cannot get it done. We cannot get a taxing set up by July first, but Iowa code says July first. So Joe, and Joe's has been talking with, with people down at Department of Management and elections people down at the state as well. So. He'll be coming up.
Are there, are there other counties that have gone through and created these EMS districts?
I think there's only a couple.
There's two towns, Sheffield and Riceville.
Yeah.
They're the only two towns in the state of Iowa.
You know, in order for a town to do it, do they do it the same? Same manner? It has to be so many?
Yeah.
It's a bunch of the ownership?
It's, yeah, their, their code is three fifty-seven V and it's identical to F, but it's just got cities versus town bits.
Okay.
So it's, they're, they're on their own separate.
But we're not seeing anyone else that has done it. The county one, the, the.
I, I think everybody's one county wide now that have done anything new, but I don't believe there's much for EMS districts in the state. No.
So, well, I. I don't know. I'm, I'm around.
Okay.
Part of Tuesday and part of Wednesday.
Yeah, but I had talked to him, told him I wouldn't be talking to you today. So all that I know to be in touch with you then and. And, uh, Joe will let you know what he's got going and. Hopefully you figure it out from there. So.
Sounds good. All right. You guys have a good rest of your day.
You too. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, uh, Rich.
Not much, um. I didn't delve into this architect stuff a little bit for the facility of the building. So I've got that a little bit. I did stop at city hall to find out something. It sounds like maybe he's. Had some contact with him already. It sounds like his office is fine.
Yeah, I got a copy of the permit. She said, is, she said, if you do. If you do the conservation, if you add on to the conservation building. She said you'll need a permit there and then you'll need a permit for your building. But she said, if you do it within a six month period. She said one permit will cover both of them. But if they get spread out more than that.
My original intention too was to. Don't convince the properties any moments to let you. Maybe. A certain property on offsets and things like that.
But we talked to Chef. He said that that would, when you own both the properties, that's not going to be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not.
I didn't know in the future if somebody were to, not that it couldn't, you know, maybe it wouldn't be sold off or then there'd be use later on, but.
Evidently that's. The way we get or, or, or what we hold that's somebody else's problem if it happens that way.
I mean, that would save us money by not having to. Reserve.
Right, right.
Um, so I'm just going through, trying to find out, maybe. Check the server account a little bit on how they pick you on through their process. Kind of. Work my way into it. It's kind of new territory trying to, I don't know, something like this. So there. Once I. Do a little research, maybe contact, feel the see. Since we're not using. It's very good federal dollars for me this. You can. It's my understanding by code. I don't know how. Like when we do a project and we have engineering and we have federal funds and engineering. We got to do the whole RFP process. I'm not quite sure how. The county does it with local dollars. If we start to go through the. Request for services and evaluate every architect. Probably now we have to hire them, but. I don't know how that process feels. My understanding, if we're using our own local dollars, we can procure anybody we want, but. The horizontal infrastructure like I work with normally. If it's, if it's. Not being paid for with federal funds, we require an engineer to do the work. I don't know how the architects. We'll do a little more digging, but right now I'm just kind of. Cutting my way through the board, trying to figure out how to go about. Getting everything started. And I said, I do kind of text over county on product. Maybe so I get some of their own documents to just look through and how they. Work through it because they've been. Like they've been putting facilities up like crazy over there. So. I have a lot of snow. I have the guys around today. It's south wind. So. Chris on the other side of the road now. I don't want to.
Didn't you call, right?
Yeah.
Um. Since you're here, did you see that email Jeff just sent out yesterday about purchase of the property?
Yeah, I'll, uh, look at, but now if I, if we end up doing that. Um. I'll have to amend the budget on my end. Because my, yeah, because my, my budget doesn't indicate that we're spending that much out of, um, property. Airages, stuff like that.
Well, I noticed we don't even have a line for that. We'd have to add.
Well.
Or at least on our side, we don't have a real estate, whatever.
See, I always put money in real estate. I've always had a real estate number and it was always for. I think a lot of our utilities or whatever we did on the other, other kind of shot on our satellite drop or whatever. But. I guess utilities always going utilities for engineering, I guess. But I've always put. Money in the DOT side for our real estate, just because you never know when you need to do something. So. But if we do end up doing that, I'll go back to it. Like the budget, I think we're probably okay. I just need to have to. Have to have a, a budget amendment.
Oh, like I said, I want to do a budget amendment to get it back. I don't know how it's all going to work logistically, but I want to get it back to you so that I can.
Well, even if we spend it, we got to.
Yeah.
Working on the local budgets, it's a big deal to do to do.
Yeah, they've turned a lot of their funding in that role.
I'll, I'll look at some numbers. Um, is that for just? One property or both?
I figured it just will be both of the votes like February one and we'll just go with it all.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, no, that's what I would.
Depends on how. If you want to look at the code and what I could spend money on. I can spend money on secondary road stuff, not necessarily conservation. So.
Well, the big chunk, the one that we need to do, that's the one that. Will be used. So.
Right. And that's, I was, I guess, when we were talking about it's voluntary to buy our secondary roads property, not necessarily. I just don't want to get them on any good. It's all.
The DOT or?
Uh. No, I mean.
I'm going to check with Elizabeth too.
Right. I mean, secondary road funds are spent for secondary roads functions, but, um. I lost this. I'll dig into it a little bit.
Me too.
I don't have more answers.
Cause is there? Good. I don't know how that works. Could you use the modified trust fund though or not?
It, it still has to go through somebody's budget and it's not in anybody's budget, right?
Right.
That's what I got in mind. I didn't get. More time to get a budget.
Otherwise you can just amend the general budget or you can.
I, I don't have enough time to do it by February first. That's the February first is what, um, I.
Was that when they? Is that?
That, that's a agreement. The law was honored before, so.
Well, if you want to do your budget amendment. Before then, I would. Well, I mean, I wouldn't be able to either. Right? It's got to go through. Actually, actually budget, actually budget is different than program. We do some digging. I think budget is just approval of the board.
Cause you don't put notice in the paper or anything.
No, what I do, when we do a program or budget amendment is due at the same time the county is doing one. So. So. What, what do you guys do? Well, we do a budget program amendment. Or a budget amendment or a program amendment with that. When you, when you're normal one. I piggyback money onto it. So there is notice that program and budget is being amended. So.
But it's not.
Um. Only if it was a program amendment, a budget amendment is just by. Or approval. I'll do some digging.
Yeah, appreciate that. Hey, Al, for Rich? Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Oh, drainage.
Does it have any claims? No?
Yeah. There's claims. Now we got to call.
Jacob. All right, are the most approved grand claims or click it?
I'll second it.
When you discuss it on? Hearing no, favor I.
And, uh, even two, there's three places where it's signed.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Jacob available? Yeah, hold on one. Hey Jacob, you might want to call us back on your cell phone. Cause it sounds really bad. You got my number there? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. No, let me answer. Hey. Hey Jacob. You there? Okay, you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
Lot better.
There we go.
Well, you're in, you're in our board meeting and we've got, uh, sets the dates for some bid openings. Is that what we're here for?
Yes, we have created thirty-four and rated fourteen.
Good.
Like to get those posted probably by the end of the day to day. I, I'm looking at, I would think give them by a month. So February. Twenty-sixth at home day, you know, meeting.
Yeah, we should, we should do.
Would they give? You wanted to do the next one, that's the one after the next, after it.
Yeah.
Time is available, pre guide.
To do ten o'clock and.
Well, I guess, yeah, we could, we could probably do that itself. So.
Ten o'clock and then ten fifteen or ten thirty or whatever you want to do there.
Okay, we could ten and ten fifteen.
Yeah.
And then. We will need to call in the landowners. For DD fourteen. Um, so they can see how all the options went.
Yeah.
So maybe we schedule that one for, I'm going to need a little time to do the math.
Yeah.
While I could sit in your office. Maybe do it at. Eleven thirty.
Sure, okay.
It shouldn't take too long, I don't think. We could maybe do it.
And that was DD fourteen, right?
DD fourteen. Yeah, we'll probably be done around ten thirty. We'll give you about an hour. Fifteen.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So DD, DD thirty-four at ten o'clock then.
Yep.
DD fourteen at ten fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll have a DD fourteen landowners discussion at eleven thirty.
Yes, and it just tends to be informational.
Okay, just informational. Okay.
Good.
Okay, that sounds good. Uh, we'll put it on the calendar and then we'll have Val, uh. Be sure and get letters or notification out to those guys. So.
Yep.
All right.
All right. Thanks everyone.
Thank you. Bye. Okay, well, good there.
Okay, one more. Um, I, I just wanted to, um, I better get an official, um.
Motion for DD two payment?
Yeah.
Make that a motion.
All right, it's motion second for the final payment on DD two. A discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
All right.
I oppose. All right. Do we need the motion for a bid date opening or?
Uh, yeah, probably.
All right. So the taking motion for DD thirty-four bid date opening of February twenty-sixth at ten AM.
I'll move.
All right.
I'll second it.
There's motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
All right.
I oppose. All right, emotional carry. Uh, DD fourteen bid opening for February twenty-sixth at ten fifteen AM.
So move.
Motion is our second.
My second.
All right, any discussion? All favor I? I oppose. All right, emotional carry.
Got those taken care of.
Motion to set landowner meeting for DD fourteen at eleven thirty of February twenty-sixth. All right, your motion is second. Motion on second, any discussion? All favor I? I oppose. All right. A busy day that is. Uh, claims, do they have any questions or comments of the claims? Motion to approve the claims? Motion to approve the claims?
I like the motion to approve the claims.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose. Any reports? Motion to approve the clerk record report.
I'll make that a motion.
All right, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose. Uh, payroll, building, salary changes? Liquor license? Approved liquor license, there's a second? All right, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose. Manure management plan, Dan Clark. They're mostly to acknowledge the manure management plan update.
I would make a most big knowledge that.
Yeah, motion second, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose. The resolution twenty twenty four oh two, Worth County right to use subscription asset policy.
That email went up like three days, did you get it?
No.
Yeah, that's what I figured, if you wanna hold it for another week, that's fine, um. I tried to email it to you a different way and I didn't see it in my, I tried to send it from word and it didn't do what it usually did, I suppose. So basically, it's, it's kinda like the other, the lease one that we did not that long ago, now it's for. Software and stuff like that, how they have to handle it, doesn't pass up on our financial statements and all that good stuff, it's a new GAZB. So, I put the threshold, uh, hundred thousand dollars. To kind of. Make sure all of ours were. Below that.
Then we're saving the lease and rent or whatever.
Yeah.
Right?
I, I.
It said the others up too.
Who'd gotta have it? All right, so your motion to approve regulation twenty twenty four dollar two, Worth County right to use subscription. All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on it? Your roll call vote, Lowberg?
I.
Spady, uh, Stone? Resolution.
We're working on audit right now and. And all, and the motion is actually, it's retroactive to July one twenty two, so it covers the twenty three. No. Just if we need to go higher with the. Yeah, or if they think GAZB or legislation does something or.
So we'll see it again. All right, uh, discussion on the max levy for twenty twenty four, twenty five, yeah, twenty four, twenty five budgets.
I asked to play this on here, discussion here, please get some discussion on it, I really have to get all the other process too, but. We kinda need to know where we're at, if a lot of departments would like to know where they're at, I know, you know, we gotta get this lot down in the next three years. And we need to figure out, I just remember later, we need to be, I think the departments would be, if we gave them a bottom line number, they had a need, would be a lot simpler than. Throwing things out there and then having come back several times, cut and cut and cut, I mean, we gave them a. We just gave them a dollar limit that they get to spend, somewhere or another, we need to figure that out, we need a bottom line. And their expenses are gonna have to meet that, instead of going on, we've been doing it the opposite for years and I just don't think that's right. So I don't know how to go about it exactly, you do, Jackie, but.
I, I mean, I, I gotta get out, well, and I've had issues, but. I, I've tried to get going on stuff quicker and until I get valuations done, I can't do much with budgets, so I, I don't, I.
Yep.
And now, now I gotta get, I'm behind the ball.
And this year, we gotta go from four point two five to four point one two.
For sure.
So.
Yeah, that's.
Question is, do we, would, do we go lower in that? Because we have four years to get there, because if this is the Vanguard year, which I think it is, when I get done looking at the. Property valuations and the jump that we had in millions of dollars, it's gonna be tougher in year two, three and four. To get down to that three point five.
Yeah, more likely, there isn't gonna be any more jump, more likely.
Yeah, so I'm looking at, we should probably. Set a max levy of try to hit three point nine five or something like that, or.
I, I would, I don't wanna maybe see the max level, but at this point, we would call it or not to exceed type of. You know, and then. You know, I mean, that'd be maximum, be max levy more likely, but.
Oh, and until we get it all into the system to know where the bottom is. I, I, I don't even know what the. Recommend, uh, military. That's left strong getting to the max.
Yeah, I understand, I just, I think it's one of the first things we need to be.
I do too, I, I think we oughta, I think we oughta, if we're going, I think we oughta go more this year, because I don't think we're gonna have the opportunity to do it. In two, three and four, without letting people go.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, we have no choice, we don't wanna overdo it either.
We don't wanna overdo it, because if you take that three percent and you do like a three point nine, the last thing you wanna do is if your property valuations. Go up. Over that six percent, you may end up taking a three percent and getting under three point five, and then you're stuck with it forever, and we don't wanna do that.
No.
Well, and the only, the only thing that we have to cut is. Are, are you gonna freeze everybody and, and can you do that? Can you freeze wages?
According to what I read in the code, a couple, oh, don't quote me on it now, but.
That's what we gotta figure out, because that's the only thing that's going up this year, because we're keeping health insurance. Or does that go down? I, I. It, it's.
It's unfortunate.
I gotta get everything together.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, yeah. We don't wanna cut services, but.
The only thing that goes up every year is salaries and health insurance. I mean, basically, right, you know, I mean, I know you have other factors like fuel and stuff like that. But the main thing that everybody has is. And then that increases IFRS and FICA. And we're already utilizing general basics or general, general supplemental, which some aren't totally using that yet. Uh, the only thing we're not using is rural supplemental, but I don't know, you'd have to be at the max of rural before you can use that.
But rural's not the problem, we've got our problem with the general basic.
Well, rural has been. Slim too.
But our major problem is general basic.
You gotta look at the one they're putting on, so you gotta get that figured out, and we're gonna have to make the decisions. I think all the department should be involved in that, and until they're involved, until they know what they can spend, not what they wanna spend. I think we're gonna, we're just gonna go around the circle. We gotta give them, we gotta figure out what's allowable growth in the county and. I, I don't like it anybody or anybody else does, and I, you know, that's where we gotta get. Somewhere or another.
Otherwise, we're going there.
But we're gonna go there, we're forced to go there. We're not gonna change legislators fast.
We're going there.
Well, it's gonna be easier to pick away at it than just.
Do it all cold.
Set it all in there and then, and for a year. Get the job to lock out, that's what, exactly what'll happen.
So I think in the next couple of weeks, you're gonna need it if you can, I, I'm only gonna be involved, and we need to kind of figure out what we can tell these departments, what they can spend.
Cause we, if you look at this, we've got seventy five cents, we gotta come down. Well, right now, if we only go to the four point one two, we haven't taken a quarter of a percent out yet of that seventy five cents. So, yeah, we. And I, and I just think that, I think we're gonna be, we're gonna have more revenue. Because of the Vanguard deal and the extra, so if we've got more revenue than the pot right now, now's the time to do it, because next year. We may not have increased growth like this. But first, we have to think, it's hard, considering it only affects the general basic. It's hard for you, without doing the whole thing, to get a handle on it.
Right.
And say, okay, how much do we lower each department? Because we could come in and say, well, lower the departments. Three percent, and we still may not have enough to get down to where we wanna be on the max levy at this time, on that general basic.
And then they're just choosing their tail.
That's what we do every year.
But, yeah, I agree with you in fact, though. We should probably.
Yeah, well, there goes things totally out of. I would agree, I would agree with you, if we could get somebody in our service, but if we get some kind of budget director, then they're gonna look at things differently than all of us look at it, they're gonna look at efficiencies, they're gonna look at everything.
And that's not a bad thing, but it's gonna be somewhat of a shock for some of the departments.
And maybe.
And that's maybe, because it may be a shock in four years when we say, you gotta get rid of them, any, that many employees. Yep.
Well, and when you got the mentality of, oh, we have this much to spend yet, and spend it by the end of the year, that's not right either.
Yep.
That's where you go.
That's not right.
You gotta give them a bottom line, and we need to figure out what we can get, and I hate, I don't like to be that person either, but it's our job.
That should have happened years ago, probably.
No. It isn't just you, it isn't just previous, it's been this way forever. Yeah, I, I don't feel properly, it's not the way I would do business, this is a business, I mean, that's.
So what actually is happening, legislature is not allowing the county to?
We go to four dollars and twenty five cents per thousand on the. Levy right now for general basic, which is pretty much your electric bill, your utilities. All your wages, everything but like FICA, uh, healthcare. IFRS, that kinda stuff, that goes in supplemental, and that thing can go over wherever it wants to, cause they realize they've already set a percentage on you.
Only so many things that can be.
There's only so many things that we can stick in there, and what the legislature has said, that between, they've got a formula and. Because we went over the six percent growth this year, we got hit with the three percent, which moved us from four point two five to four point one two. We can't go over that, but that's not a big enough decline, we feel, over a four year period. Because in fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine and after, you're going three dollars and fifty cents where you like it.
Yep.
That makes sense?
Thirty thirty.
Yeah, we're the thirty thirty. So. Um, yeah, I, I, I think that we oughta go, we oughta shoot for less than. Little under four, but we really don't know until we get farther down the road to figure out where we're at right now.
And, I mean, we have time and we don't have time, because we, we can't do that first amount or first. Hearing until March twenty fifth at the earliest, because of that mailing that happened, but by March fifth, I have to have everything in there and. Pretty much the way it's gonna be, so that that can happen.
Yeah.
So it's just.
You know, we need more, we need more information to make this decision, so that we can send these budgets back to the departments and go, okay, here's where you gotta get to.
And speaking of my side, it's hard, cause we got union negotiations here, gonna be starting in a couple of weeks, which we don't know where that can end up, but. On my department and being a short term person with only a year left, I would much rather see the bottom figure. Say, this is where I gotta get to, this is what my growth is, and let me figure that out in my department and what I think, what I think. Um, similar to why I'm running for one deputy.
Right. And we haven't got that figured yet.
Yeah, but I'm just.
But I agree with you, isn't that what they, isn't that what Jessica said too, with public health, then? Tell us how much of a percent increase we can go on our employees and give me a bottom number.
Well, and another thing came up that was important to say is that. Um, thrifts is just keep in mind, if you freeze departments, it better be all departments, but some have their own budgets, and that's not fair.
Well, and then we, we don't totally control those things, you know, but it's not, I'm not saying, it's not right, it's how it is.
I think I'm at the minimum right now for a real basic, can't go lower than that, though.
But you're, you're part of all the budget.
I get it, what I'm saying.
Yeah, we still gotta give you the same amount of money.
Things like public health, conservation, we control amount of dollars that we give them. So, yes, they have to approve their budget, but we can, we can tell them they don't, this is what they get. If it's ten thousand less, twenty thousand less, ten thousand more, we get to tell them what they get, not what they want. And that's where we gotta get to.
And I see, it makes it tough with the union this year, for you.
And maybe we're perfectly fine, but you know.
Might not be as bad as you think, but. But it's a lot worse too. It's just the fact of. We don't wanna, there's times to tear the Band-Aid off, but we don't wanna do that in this situation.
Cause like I say, I don't, I don't think we're gonna see probably very full getting much here, it's, it's all gonna be pretty much this year, and we'll be done with that, and then we're just gonna have to walk. The rentals, pretty much taking profit value and everything else.
The, the increase of two hundred thirty nine million in property values this year, how often you gonna see that in a town? I mean, that's before rollback, but even so, you've still got assessed values being out there that way, it's not taxable value.
And we still never know what's gonna happen with the legislature. Never.
That's gonna all change in two years too?
Yeah.
Completely go a different way.
But we have to plan on it, not changing.
Even if it changes in two years, there's still gonna be at least a year left in there, so you're gonna, you're gonna, three years regardless, what's wanted to say. And I'll guarantee you, there's nothing on the legislative, if you're pertaining to me, that, as of right now.
Nope.
There's nothing, not even in the, being talked about, they're done, it's over. At all.
At least there's. Other counties in worship.
I know a couple of counties, they just, it's, it's what you're gonna get.
So, yeah, we need to have workshops on this, once we get more information, get some figures put together.
Just a reminder, but, you know, still, we got one budget hearing this week, with EMA.
We're gonna have to, we have no, we're, we're kinda, we're up a crack. I mean.
Yeah.
You know, it's, that's, that's the problem. Where these things get out in front of us before we can figure out where we're gonna be at.
Yeah, but I mean, like public health, we've already talked, and we might, we might basically do what we're doing here with a minor engine, finally acknowledge that here's the budget. Is what we're hoping for, so we've already made plans to come back at least once in a few, three more times, or, you know, turn in the final budget, but the best thing to be is. If I have to, we have to give her a bottom line, I think she's gonna have to make the tough decisions. You know, we, we discussed some things this week and, and, you know, questions arose and, and things might have to change. So, and I think, hopefully, everybody else is aware of that, you're right, we need to concentrate on your department the same, within reason, it's gonna be tough, some departments are already running as lean as they can, I think, but.
Well, like, for instance, the recorder in the auditor's office. They're lean, there's, there's nothing in there.
Central County is trying something different, um, they had a discussion last week about using TIP. That would pay for some departments that are considering economic development, number one, maybe economic development, two. They're finding ways to see what part of conservation is in the economic development side of things, and according to their representative, if I'm speaking properly, and I. I think I'd ask you to look at it a little bit yourself, but it sounds like that they could use TIP to. Pay for certain things in conservation out of budgets, sort of using, you know, they got grants and stuff, they gotta be kinda careful. They've gotta be kinda careful with, if they get too much outside funding, then they don't fall by their grants, but it sounded like. Certain things that could fall into economic development with the leftover TIP that. Um, doesn't pay for the bonds anymore, you know, if our bond payments are lower than what we're bringing in for TIP. That extra money can be utilized to pay for certain economic development. Items.
Who looks into all this stuff?
With that.
Who looks into all this stuff? Who has time? Who looks into all this stuff? Who has time to do that?
I have, there's a board member that looks into that, and trying to figure out ways to utilize the TIP to help. Don't relieve the burden a little bit.
I think I'll say about that chip, it's just always on chalking, chopping block, it looks fish every year.
It is, you know, your gratitude would probably.
Like, you know, you could do that, but that could come back and bite you.
There's, there's, there's a point where it run out, and you don't have a budget for the, you know, to help supplement. And I, I'll give you the person to talk to about it, but we have the financial advisor in Longest Beacon. There seems to be some promise in the fact that you could fund certain things to relieve some of the stress on the. General.
Need to know who your, the financial advisor is over there too.
I'll talk to you after.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems like a unique way to, cuz they would have, you know, even when, when people are coming in asking for, um. For some of their budget things like libraries, but libraries fall into a category of economic development, and as long as there's a way to determine whether or not it can. Maybe TIP funding, it's supplements and that stuff, you know.
And with our growth this year, who knows, she might put a, put the numbers together, we might come in at three point nine, three point nine five, we don't know.
We don't know.
Well, I can dream.
Or four twelve, whatever, you're receiving more money, I mean, it's not much more money, but you're still receiving more money than last.
Because of the valuations, that's what we talked about, but, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it might, it might come in under, underneath that four point one two.
It could.
It could.
But we still, we almost gotta think ahead more this year, when we think about.
And we have built up the fund a little bit more too, so that helped.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're sitting bad in the fund itself.
Inter County's board meeting is a video, I want all their meetings, it'll just, maybe it'll help open a door to something different.
Yeah, it's just something we've.
We don't wanna go slim right now in a big property evaluation upgrade, and then the next three years, we're scratching our head.
Just trying to finally make it simpler.
And, and like you said, probably before I was here, I saw one year that everybody had to go through and.
Paper here, the portioning paper, I was sitting over the chemistry, or thought pop up, and it was about eighteen eighty-four and something like that. And I think there's a bunch of custom made secondary roads, there's. That's where we got down on employees, and then it's gradually worked its way back up, yeah, it's eighty-four, eighty-four.
Well, something happened in, um, something after two thousand also, cuz Kay had some stuff where everybody, everybody had. Look, I can't remember what valuation went down, like thirty-seven percent or something, and it just really mailed everything.
Yeah, I just remember the one from way back when where the secondary roads just. So.
What was that, was there levy a lot higher then, and then it was down to seventy-five, seventy-five percent, but we're running at the very bottom line now.
I don't know what it was, too many years ago since I read the article in the paper. I just know there was half of the secondary roads department, this.
Anyway, thanks.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, well, I guess, something we gotta keep working on, so. It's not gonna be a once, one-time discussion yet, but.
I'll probably start plugging into the agenda.
Yeah, so now we'll go to the amended item. Especially, my discussion is on Department fifty-two, the data processing budget. After some emails last Monday and this week, I got ahold of Sam on Monday afternoon. Cuz I wanted to know what the flyovers were costing us, and according to you, and this is the old ones, right?
No, this is, this, I was not understanding that correctly, so, um, I, the, I can give you better.
I also talked to Joel on Saturday, and he said that in your budget. For the flyovers, each year, you pay twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
Then the assessor picks up any extras that she wants. And she pays for that out of her budget, correct?
That's what she's saying, she would pay the additional.
Well, Joel told me she's been paying any additional that she's got on there. So, my question is. And then I also asked Joel, how did your department end up paying that whole bill when the assessor's got her own line item on my taxes? She has her own levy. And I would think that they would use that more than anybody else. How has that went into your budget and not at least fifty percent of it went into her budget? And Joel said, or Joel told me at the time.
That would help us right there.
When, when he told us at the time, was he discussed this with the assessor, and they didn't agree on it, and you know, Joel is. He said, fine, I'll just pick it up on my budget, and has done it ever since. What's that? It's, yeah, so that's, that is in your, and I asked you, and he said the same thing, it's in department number fifty-two.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and really, it's been used as, you know, part of GIS. So, um, fifty-two, I don't know that GIS has a specific budget. Um, fifty-three might cover some stuff, but, um. So, yeah, it's been, you know, they use it in, uh, it, it updates the stuff for the shared departmental, the. Imaging that they have over there as well, uh, so emergency response.
Joel told me you pay annually at twenty-eight thousand dollars each year.
Yes. Yep, annually.
And, and my question is, I'll come at least not half of that, even coming out of the assessor's budget, considering she's got her own line left. I mean, she's got her own budget, her own levy, it's right on my taxes. And considering that that, the debt, the data part of it is in the general basic. I'm just, now, tell me if I'm wrong, am I looking at this wrong?
No, 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 I don't think so.
Well, I think it oughta change, and I will say this. The assessor did send Mark and me and said she'd talk to you. A email then after I'd kinda figured this all out. Saturday afternoon that said more and more assessors offices are going to split, just splitting the cost of the flyovers because of that reason. I would consider taking on half the expense or even the whole expense moving forward. This would lessen IT's budget and general fund, so she's kinda come to the realization too, that she's been using this and not kicking anything into the box.
Yeah, she's got to hear that in the chat that says, uh, they paid for the change finder, which was around seven thousand, I don't know.
I don't know what it is either, but.
Finder, the, uh. Process they run on images, comparing it to the old, so they can find new properties or change.
Basically, anything that popped up, that's.
Yes.
And Joel confirmed that, that thousand dollar thing, you're with me. He al, I also, I asked him, I said, are a lot of counties going to two years, and he said, there's counties going to two years, but he said, a lot of them are three. He said, we got counties out there in state of Iowa that are four and five-year flyovers, so he said, they're kinda all over. I did not ask Joel that question, and I never thought about that.
So, rural counties would probably have more unseen changes than, you know. A whole county, for example, whole counties, probably everything in there is pretty much citywide, there's probably a lot of permits filed. The changes are pretty easy to find there. The question would be, is in rural Worth County, or Winnebago, or Mitchell, or any of them. Are you gonna pick up enough dollars of tax evaluation to offset that?
That was the question I had.
Saying it doesn't.
Oh, you mean going to a, like a?
So, how much, how many new machine sheds, how many new homes are you gonna pick up in a, a one or a two-year, even in a two-year time period? Will it cover the, what was the cost you were talking about? Fifteen thousand?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars? And I, I think there was some company email, you know, would take, how many?
Every year.
Four thousand a year.
Four thousand a year.
Four thousand a year.
Over and above this, over and above this, yeah. So, and, and that's what I talked with the, uh, the guy from Eagleview. Uh, they do the flyover, he said, uh, that it looked like they found. In, after the last flyover, they found four million dollars in taxable.
Valuation.
Valuation. Um, now, I don't know what that translates to dollars, because I don't know.
What buildings were there, what?
Right.
Yeah, so, if it's a green bin, that's different than a house.
And are you catch, yeah, are you catching up against that one year, cuz you went more often than one.
Right, so that's, that was after a three-year gap. So, if you go every two years, you know, you're not gonna increase, you're not gonna get four million every time, because you're reducing things. So maybe it's, you know, two-thirds of that, so maybe your increase would be. Two hundred and eighty instead of, or two, uh, two point eight million instead of four million.
Agriculture-wise, I'm sure most people are looking at thirty percent, and that's the same time next year, and probably next year. Or fill them all, another four million dollars, you can get, you can bring men, or new homes.
I don't know if you could, you know, find an average of what it was per year, you know, and then multiply that.
Yeah, you're averaging four million dollars a year.
No, it's, it's not that, it's.
I was just saying, if you were, then this would be a no-brainer, especially four million a month, you know, and it'd be an over. I, it's, it's, I don't know.
But we as supervisors controlled his budget, is where I was going with this thing, and we've got stuff that they're using. That's in his budget, which comes under that general basic again. And I really think that. That needs to get, some of that, at least half of that bill gets, needs to get picked up by the assessor's office, and she's commented that.
She'd be okay with that.
Well, she said she'd consider.
Consider.
Fifty percent, possibly a hundred percent of it, I guess my attitude is she oughta do fifty percent of it, and then we, then she could consider a hundred percent. I just. Cuz we could go to a five-year flyover. You know? We could, it could go the opposite direction too, considering we're in control of your budget, your bottom line.
Well, and, and, yeah, that's a discussion we had was, you know, um. You meant, and then, you know, you guys don't have to approve her budget, but, yeah, but they approved my budget, and so.
Right.
I have to sign off on this as well as you do. So.
Which we're a third of.
We're a third of, so then our board still has to finally say whether they wanna. Chicken adder to it, so that's her part of it.
Yeah. But I don't think that it should be, at least half of it should be in his budget.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion, I might be, I might be out to lunch.
It is utilized by the chair, it's utilized by Rich, it's utilized by everybody else.
But I would think they would use it more than anybody.
So, but it should be split up, yeah.
Yeah. And she commented the fifty percent here, about a lot of the assessors office are going to split the cost of the flyovers. So. I just.
Well, conference board coming up, it's.
Well, that's right, she should, if she's gotta do it, she should get it on her budget now, that's why I brought it up today.
That's what I was going on, that we need to. Make this, get this figured out, so it can be a part of the conference board meeting, that it's in the budget, to offset the cost.
And I guess my attitude was. I'm not gonna let it be in your budget.
Well, you can't decide what's in his budget, you.
Just the bottom line, yeah.
But, I don't know how that works with him, he's, he's not elected, he's appointed, so does that? I'm not sure.
I rely on you for those big.
Basically, you still do the bottom line, but you are controlling the line item, I'm sorry, you know, we're gonna say, this needs to be.
Down by twenty-eight thousand dollars?
I just think it's done wrong right now, that's all I'm bringing to your attention, after looking into this thing.
Still gonna affect the taxpayers either way.
Either way.
Right, it just helps the overall everybody else's budget over here to get it into another. Levy line item over here.
Not gonna be hit by that three point five.
Right.
Yeah, it's not gonna get hit by that three point five.
But then if it goes up, it's not helping the taxpayers anymore, and that's what legislature was trying to do.
That's another subject. Yeah, I'm just talking about that three point five ways to try to get to that point without losing employees. Yeah, but you're right, on the overall basis of it, the taxpayers are, they're gonna pay for it one way or the other, it's just which line item it's coming under.
So how would you propose a new item?
Oh, I don't, I'll, I'll stop down and set with office after meeting. I'll email you guys something or whatever, you see. Hey, I just, how do we do that? We're not approving any budgets yet, but we can just.
No, but we're, I think we have a goal of trying to get a bottom line. There is.
When is that up for renewal? Is that an annual?
Last year was six years ago for me.
Doesn't be an addition to that, so we'd have to sign them all, you know.
We have, told me it was a six-year contract that you had annually, but I was under the impression, and don't, don't tell me if I'm wrong. On our side of it, we can get out of it anytime we want. We're just locking in their.
Their price.
Their price, but I don't.
You'd have to look at the contract.
Don't know, I kinda leave that up to you guys and I too to do this.
Yeah, let me look and see if I've got.
So they still get more information?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a lot to do, is just see where, where that comes up, is, if it's just an addition, and I, I'm sure we'll have to sign it. Just finding the addition of the contract, because we've written about that.
We, we had an amendment, um, that was signed in twenty twenty-one.
And that was when Julie changed.
Um, and that reduced the cost for us, the cost of imaging is going down. So, that's why they'll, they will be able to, cuz the.
Joel told me that.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, look here. Uh, there, there, they had it divided into three stages, stage one, or, or three projects. Primary, secondary, and third project, or first, second, third project, so the third project. I, uh, let's see, when does that, again? The second project, I believe, was the twenty twenty-one, so this year. Cuz it was nineteen. And twenty-two and twenty-five, I believe, so we had it done in twenty-two. Was the last time it was done, I believe. Uh, so, we're on schedule to have it done in twenty-five, I believe. There would be an amendment, and, um, it may be an extension that extends it, and it would go to two years flying. So, uh, I don't know exactly when that would take effect, but.
All right, well, I'll do a little more research, and then we'll get something on the agenda for next week, my works for you guys?
Yeah, I just brought it to your attention.
Thank you. All right, moving on then, we'll go to water system improvements, I don't think there's any new on that. Uh, as of now, when we're back home, unless, um, she's not gonna be on, she did, uh, text me, she had to take her daughter to the. Uh, EMS continued discussion, we kinda ran through that with Jeff was here, anybody else have anything else?
Question, um, all this is.
Yeah, it's, it's so confusing, the people that say it confused. Yeah, Department of Management saying we can't. We'd have to have it in March, because you're only allowed to have elections like three different times in a year, special elections, but yet. The election we have would fall under December thirty-nine, it falls under December forty-nine, and. But then they're saying if we don't get it done by March, they can't get the tax, separate tax thing developed by July first, even though in the code it says July first. So, it's been, uh, just running in circles, trying to figure out.
Go on, do a whole bunch of work, and then they'll tell you you can't do it.
Right, and well, well, I guess that's the worst, worst case is, is that it would. Is that it would go on the general in November. Which unfortunately puts us out another year on that day.
Planning for budgets, that's something we'd have to figure out where we're gonna get it from, I know.
Right, so you wouldn't be able to collect money until after July first of twenty.
Twenty five.
So if they got, if they got through the general election, then July first, the following, basically. July first following the election, is when it would be twenty five, and start pulling back. That's the only really big downfall is. If it doesn't happen in like June.
Well, I would speed up though.
Yes.
Otherwise, we'd get that last year.
Right.
I just, I don't know how you get money at that point, if it's.
I, and that's what Department of Management said, but it's like. That's what the code says, so how, I mean.
Cause I thought Jules was thinking about it couldn't be passed till twenty six, so, again, so, general election, now it would be just fine for that.
Yeah.
Because you know by November, and you'd be able to start budgeting.
For, right.
Which, you'd just still be behind, because you're missing it already.
Right.
Tuesday night, or it was, um, these are problems people have some temporary, they're also like. Gap funding, maybe somewhere another. If we do that, we will, but that, with me, all that kind of.
Right, and I personally, you know where I stand on that, I talk to Jeff, and. I don't think we ought to pay him by invoice or by call. I think we should figure out how much ARP money that we have available to spend on our, our three. Entities that provide ambulance service for Worth County. And just send them a check.
Right.
Each one of them a third of it.
Well, unless we decide, and do a budget amendment, I can't really do many.
Right, that's why we need, that's why we need, that's why I brought this up, and we need to discuss this, we need to figure out how many total dollars. That we're going to possibly s- put in there for ambulance service, and then just send them a check.
Do you go for budget amendment at what? Probably gotta get this on the discussion like we, or until action like we maybe.
Well, we got.
If, if I can pay, if I can pay by February first through different means, then I can take a couple weeks for the budget. But, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm, I made all of them. I, I just gotta figure out if I can pay those by February first.
We've got one million ninety two thousand dollars in ARP money, and if you take out six hundred thousand. And I like, and I still think, like, for seven hundred thousand, and that hundred thousand in the LATCF funds. You're down to having two hundred ninety two thousand, that you could possibly take a portion of that. And divide it up three ways and just send them a check. For everybody that, for those three entities that provide ambulance service in Worth County. And then you wouldn't have to keep track of the numbers, the paperwork, the invoices, nothing.
That's what we can do for now, and we'll.
We just gotta figure out how much of that we wanna spend.
Yep, and hopefully.
So why would we pay more than what we're doing?
Because my attitude would be that.
Yeah, true.
What's that?
You've already been getting it.
Yeah, you've been getting it for free for quite a few years, and my attitude would be, if you send like eighty thousand dollars to the Winnebago one. Well, you got enough there, if you wanna figure it out, you got enough there for two years, and I don't know how it'd work out with Mason City, and that kind of, in other words. We're only gonna spend this much ARP money on it. And considering the fact that they've been. Pretty lenient for Worth County for quite a few years, cause they came to it in eighteen with this problem. I don't have any problem sending them just a lump sum of money, here's a contribution to your ambulance service. What do you think, AJ?
Well, I have to take it off, I mean, I was doing it up, hopefully. Taking off our bill in the future.
And that's something that the towns and the districts, or the townships, they have to figure that out.
You know.
Well, the money's gone, money's gone.
Yeah.
There's no magic, who will take this from who?
I mean, if you send each one of them like eighty thousand, you're looking at two hundred forty thousand, that's two hundred ninety two, leaves you a little pushing in there, with that. If that pipeline gets more expensive, then what? You know, that's just a water line, water, or a water line. So I guess that's what we gotta figure out. And you don't have to keep track of anything, we don't have to go to Marilyn and bother her, nothing, it's just, there's how much money we've got.
And now, and after that, they have to decide what would be, what would be. That was, I guess it's. Can't get funds. You want to get your own checkbook, so.
Yeah, but I have, I do not have.
They can't make people.
Nope, which I think is totally wrong. I don't know how that ever gonna start.
Well, that happened, I think I've explained that one to you. Cause in the twenty eighty agreement way back in two thousand and five, they were exposed to it.
All right, anything else on EMS? I guess we did get a.
Yes, we did.
Monthly report, but no one here to talk to, so. I guess you can read that over, I didn't even read it over, so I was out of town this weekend, so, I'll look at it, for today. Uh, department had discussion, anybody, anything?
I.
What about water line get that?
We're waiting for permit to be in our yet. Yeah.
Uh, I didn't have any meetings this week, but in my conversations with Joel. He did, and my reply to the fact that we're trying to work on the permitting of buildings in this county, he did. Uh, had Brian Smith get in touch with me from Schneider for geo permits, and they have twenty five counties. He sent me information on it and a proposal, I fired it to all you this morning in your emails. You can just take a look at over, it's just for your information, and it's a deal on Beacon where. You can sit on your computer at home and apply for your permit, do the whole permitting process, and fire a check. Oh, that's why I said, for your information, take a look at it. So.
Like they like having a person they can talk to, or, well, first they have to know that they actually need to do it.
Yep, and then I did talk to, and I sent you an email on that, or I talked to Matt today. Working with Jeff Horrible to put together that letter, and then in there. I, on the website, Jeff said he'd be more than happy to tell you what you basically needed. You never got back to me on the question of, were you willing to work together with him and try to redo our website a little bit? To make it easier, so people, right now, people can't find anything. I mean. They're having problems finding stuff, and it's gotta get made simpler.
As far as like permits and stuff.
Yeah, as far as where to go, for the process and stuff like that, so.
It's searchable by word, so.
I can find it, but.
This, this website is way better than a lot.
But I, that's, that's what fawns me out, that people are struggling with it, I know one thing that was a concern, was they couldn't, didn't find anybody's emails. Anymore, but there was a reason for that, so I don't know what else to.
And, and you may not change anything.
But you can brainstorm and see if there's things that you can make better on it. Makes sense?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, getting, getting permit forms on there would be good, you know, that people could. Okay, it says I need a permit, and if I could just, you know, open it on my computer, that'd be great.
Yeah, maybe that's all you do. Tell them it out online, yeah, they don't like doing it online.
Cause either they don't know how to, or they're worried somebody's gonna get their information.
The only permits that are out there that I can find are ones for DOT permit stuff, um, and they're not fillable. They're just a scanned in PDF, and you have to print it off and fill it out on paper and turn it in. It'd be nice to have a fillable PDF out there where you can type in, enter all your information, you can print it if you want, you can save and send it in.
But yeah, you may not change anything, you may change, you may make some minor changes, at least I got. You guys talking on the thing, and trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And the department heads?
I need to get your guys' computers into updating.
Take it today.
We'll.
It's all right, I need, that will change.
Yeah, yeah. We'll get those things updated, and, um, so it's gonna be a little more, close on the office three sixty five, and.
That was good to me. All right, uh, supervisor weekly, you know, I guess I already gave mine, I jumped ahead of you. Mark?
At public health, uh, we've had good discussions involved it, and I think one of the things that really helped there would be. They discussed the nurses' positions again, and what we could do, we're still not getting any applications, so where's their salary going? And discussed what we talked about here at the meeting last week.
Well, it's too bad that we're having to compete with the traveling nurse, and Mercy's sitting twenty miles away.
Traveling nurses and the union and brother man, though, yeah. Uh, well, and actually, your reality is, I just, or Mitchell County, or the nursing home in Mitchell County, which is the one in Northwood. I could, but, if I picture that, it's like forty two or forty five dollars starting pay for an RN. And we're at thirty. You know, granted, you're probably gonna work some weekends and stuff where you want public health, but, you know, how do you? And I, I'm a firm believer in the government, but you never be the wage setter, but, you know. We're getting, all around, you've got the rich you're running to, sheriff you're running into, we're getting our butts kicked by private industry, and I don't know what the answer is.
And that's the thing, in the private industry, and I don't want to interrupt, but, private industry can, can raise their wages, and they'll just charge it back to their consumers. And we also provide services, but it's hard to rest, charge it back.
Or kind of where, now they said you can't do it, so, but, that's just one thing we're running to, and I, you know, giving her, we need to give. A board over there, and her a bottom line figure, so if you know where to go to. Um, you know, whether we have to make cuts there, what we give, that's what we'll have to do, but we need to get to that point somewhere or another. Um, the only, you know, we talked, we've talked, we've thrown several ideas out there, how we could entice some nurses to come, you know, to. Do the John Durkey sites thing, where you pay for the schooling, and you have to sign a, you know, a contract, uh, well. We think she'd get two hundred years out of them, and everybody else does in private industry.
Four year agreements?
Discussion, and it's just one I thought about, and I don't, I don't know what it is either, we need a little better family policy. Um, somewhere or another, for health insurance, can do better than family policy, whether that would be the B and L V O, I don't know that.
I do think that is something we should look at.
It's frustrating, we're hiring one person a lot.
We're hiring one person, but, but you are, if you want that family to live here, and. Other places buy pretty good spousal, family type policies. Difference between us and them is, most everybody else pays out of pocket for their individual policy. And that's something we could be looking at here, you, you pay something, you gotta pay something in for your health insurance, that would help the overall picture, I think. Um, you know, to get hundred percent of my health insurance, basically, you're paid for, and my out of pocket expenses, and my deductible is pretty phenomenal. I don't think there's another business in Martha that would do that.
I'm not clear, I understand what you're saying.
So, my wife, for example, pays X amount of dollars out of her pocket for her health insurance, every month, and whatever page it.
Right, we do that here too.
For family.
For family.
Well, or higher deductible.
Oh.
Or lower deductible. Or no, 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 nevermind.
Or my policy's about identical relative.
I didn't understand, cause I don't like.
That's where, you know, as a family, it's tough, and that's one of the, that ends up, we end up getting any young nurse. Coming in there, or she's right out of school, or shortly, you know, thinking this is a good idea. All of them has a family, you know, and if their foster didn't already have that, to help cover that family. You know, it's tough. So, I think those are things that we need to be kicking around, and.
You've brought it up more than once, that they've mentioned.
You, same thing, you hire a bunch of young guys.
Say we're only hiring one person, but I've got maybe two, three openings that I can't get open, get people in for, and one thing is. They're going backwards when they come work with it.
Right, they can go to a lot of other places and probably get a bigger kickback into the family.
And I'm just, I'm just curious how other counties aren't able to do it, paying, you know. And I don't know if it's the union agreements I'm looking at, but you know, just looking at four counties, they're paying a hundred percent of both, like, how do they do it?
That's pretty phenomenal.
What, what program are they on, that they can do that? And what can we do to help, cause right now, we're less than fifty percent of the county paying in. Employees paying fifty, fifty, maybe almost sixty percent of the. How can you narrow that down a little bit, to make it more competitive, because some people are coming in here saying, wow. My job now is paying eighty percent, or a hundred percent, like, but that's a dollar per hour figure, and it's.
Where you say, it might not be out of, too far out of line on the wage package, but. Somebody's gonna take two dollars an hour to check and put it for insurance, while all of a sudden you're out of that.
Yep, and that's what they're doing, they're only doing the math, and they're saying this is a losing proposal, and that's why we're struggling sometimes, yeah. And you may have existing employees looking at it going, dang, you know. I can go somewhere else, get a raise just by switching, getting health insurance.
Right.
Just lost depth, even, whatever it is. No, it's not an easy, there's no easy answer to it.
No, right.
And it's probably because we don't have enough people able to sit down and do the research that needs to be done to find out where we go.
And in the nursing field, it gets really tough, like Mark's dealing with the board, that's just.
It's just, uh, it's, you know, and I did bring it back, this, you know, how we've been getting by, and. The comment was, as well, it probably turns people away, but same token is, like I said, you know, if we get another nurse. Is there enough business to justify having her there? The only answer is, I hope so.
And if you have to raise. What you're paying that nurse, what about the other nurses that have been there? That's where that thing came in the budget, they need to raise them up, it could be a, just a snowball.
It is. And we've been chasing that tail for the last four, five years, and it's not doing any good, because they don't stay more than six months, a year, and they're gone. And I think a lot of it does have to do with there's better opportunity, better health insurance, better wages.
Not that far away.
Not that far.
That far away.
Anything else? Oh, I had, with the state of North Iowa conference last week, in Mason City, in Miami. Kinda went through how that area is doing as far as projects and growth, and that kind of stuff, so. Uh, pretty interesting, we've got, uh, Mason City, the south end, we've got some projects interrupted in their industrial areas, so. Probably see a lot of expansion down that way in the near future. Debbie Durham was there. Bringing them up, some of the state stuff that, uh, they've accomplished, which they have done a lot, but. One of the, but one of the best states to live in, and all kinds of good stuff, but, it was pretty interesting, so, otherwise, that's all I had. Uh, anything else to add for future agenda? Obviously, we'll have a budget amendment.
What'd you say?
A budget amendment coming in. Um, all right, nothing else, I'll take most adjourned.
I will make a motion to adjourn, most of them.
Well, in favor, I.
I.
Okay, means adjourned.